Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everyone for coming tonight, especially on the short notice, the short time of turnaround that we have on this whole issue. I'm going to introduce the commissioners and the circuit clerk, sorry, county clerk. I want to put you up with the courts. After I introduce them, either of the commissioners, because I think they do want to speak, I'm going to have them go ahead and speak to you. On my left is the Southern Commissioner, Larry Hackett. To my immediate left is Marlene Waynes Scott, the county clerk. And on my right is Allen Griffin, the Northern Commissioner. I'm Jim Wheatley, the Presiding Commissioner. Allen, would you like to state your name?
Thank you for coming in. Again, my name's Allen Griffin. I'm a lifetime resident of Bates County, been here all my life, served for a few years in the service. And I live in the northern part of the county, so therefore I represent all these people on my side and fence, so to speak. My goal as a commissioner has been to look at the problems that come to our county and try to observe it from all angles, so that I can make an educated decision on what's best for our county. I try to make myself think as a group of people, not just one person, my own personal interests. I try to keep out of it. Sometimes it's difficult, but that has been my goal, was to measure everything fairly and make a great decision for our counties, so we can go into the future as a strong county. Thank you.
I would echo pretty much what Allen said. This is not an easy decision. There's two sides to it, and both sides are very passionate about what they believe in. Our decision, our position's extremely tough in this, I'll tell you right up front. But again, I think the three of us all live by the same motto, that we're trying to make the right decision for Bates County and for the citizens of Bates County. So, we've got kind of an overwhelming crowd here tonight. It wasn't planned that way, to eliminate people or have people stuck in closets and out in halls and things like that, but the beginning focus of it was to call in key stakeholders and obtain information from all pertinent sides of it, and make that decision. We open it up, we have pre-registered speakers, surrounding chairs here, they'll have their opportunity to speak their concerns, suggestions, or whatever. But again, this is an informational meeting. We appreciate everybody being here, and our intent is to soak it in and try to do what's best. Thank you.
Look, both of them have made the comments. This meeting is an information meeting for the commissioners. We are trying to make the best educated decision for the protection of Bates County, the citizens of Bates County, and any businesses that come to Bates County, whether it's ag-related or not. And virtually everything that comes into Bates County is going to be an ag-related business, because we don't have a lot of other venues to give them, other than ag. The decision will not be made tonight, whether we will enact an ordinance or not, because there will be times between the discussions we have over the next two meetings, and we may even have an extra meeting because of it. We may be reaching out to the people who are here tonight, that are presenters, that are giving us information, good, bad, pro, con, whatever, so we can have the information we need. We may be contacting them to get clarification on exactly what's being said. Kind of go over the guidelines of the meeting itself. On the table and outside there, there are the actual opening guidelines, the meeting agenda, the sample ordinance, and a map of the proposed area that is in question on this specific meeting tonight. The opening guidelines. Only the commissioners will be allowed to ask questions. Remember, this is a meeting for us to get the information to make the decisions. Individuals that are speaking on their behalf to get personal input have a total of two minutes to speak. So, a husband and wife are in this together, if they're not pre-registered, as each other, because each may have their own timing. If they try to get together, there's only two minutes. You've got two minutes as an individual, person, or entity speaking. And those are the people that are around the outside seating. No questions will be asked of those people by the commissioners or anyone else during this meeting. Now, if you want to talk about it after the meeting, that's fine. These people are basically giving their thoughts and their ideas and reasons for or against an ordinance on CAFOs. Individuals or persons that are presenters, those are the individuals at the table. For informational meeting, we'll have a total of five minutes to speak. The same thing. If there is an entity that has two people that want to speak, they don't have five minutes apiece, it's a total of five minutes. Questions may be asked by the commission of those individuals, and only the commission can ask questions. A lot of it may be for clarification of something they said. We'll be taking notes as we go. Any disruptions in this meeting, we'll close the meeting at this point. No interrupting of any person that is speaking. If you don't like what that person's saying, wait till after the meeting and catch them outside. We need the input, good or bad, positive or negative, what these people are giving us. The person speaking around the room are as they register. So, Lonny got first registration, he's the first one to speak, all the way around, that's how they signed up. The presenters, we randomly pull the member to match their name to a position. So, we didn't actually try to stack the deck one way or the other. As I said, the pre-registered speakers have two minutes. Marlene's got a timer, she'll set it, and as soon as they start, she'll start it. Lonny, Lonny, you can get up, she's not going to start it as soon as I say Lonny. Okay? We want you to introduce yourself as you get up and speak. That way, number one, we know we've got the right people who's supposed to speak. Marlene can get the names specifically, and we can go from there. She is the recorder for this meeting tonight. Either you, Allen, or Larry, have anything else? Oh, the meeting is being recorded. So, it's not one of these, oh, what was said? Nobody remembers. Right there's the answer. So be careful what you say, or how you say it, okay? Well, let's go ahead and get started with the pre-registered speakers. Like I said, two minutes, and this thing will go off as soon as two minutes are up. Lonny Duckworth.
I'm Lonny Duckworth, and I'm here as a producer and a lifelong resident of Bates County. I'll just say upfront, my remarks are pretty mission general, but I'll just say upfront, I am opposed to this ordinance. Agriculture's been a part of my life for my entire 69 years. The process of raising food is a fascinating, frustrating, and rewarding process that requires labor, capital, and more capital than we want these days, and faith that the sufficient rains will come to produce a crop, so the process of tilling, planting, and growing animals and harvest can be done again next season. It's not just a way of life, it is life here. And everything that we have today began with the soil that grows for forage, for livestock and crops that sustain human life. I've said many times that we are a very spoilt lot, this American people, and for we have abundant food and the cheapest food in the entire world. Don't take me wrong, I like being spoiled. But the reason for this is that God has blessed us with not only abundant resources, but also farmers and ranchers that are allowed to freely put their labor and money on the line each year to produce the food that we now not only enjoy, but also need to support our families. It is therefore paramount that our agriculture producers be allowed to freely put their resources at risk without undue restrictions and produce products for our benefit. Indisputably, agriculture is the livelihood of our county. Agriculture sustains every business in Bates County without exception, and to restrict and to overregulate, what number?
Just one, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is Kelsey Tuney?
Yes, the same time. We were under misunderstanding, my name's Travis Tuney.
You're Travis, she's Kelsey. Do you want to tag team?
Yes.
You both have two minutes.
No, we're fine. We were under misunderstanding, we thought we had to sign up to even be in this meeting to hear what was going on, so we signed up to speak. We just wanted to be here to be informed of what's happening and hear what is going on. So, we're just here to support the ordinance and speed it up. Move along.
Thank you. Bonnie Teal.
Thank you. Bonnie Teal, I live actually in Vernon County, but I have land in Bates County that is a very short distance from this project. I want to, upfront, I am vehemently opposed. I think that this is something that none of you want next door to you. I have visited with farmers and families that reside next to this, or not this particular one, but hog operations in other parts, primarily in Vernon County, and there isn't one person that is next to it that I have ever talked to that was for this. All of the issues that they experienced have denigrated their land, their property has gone down, they've had issues with water, air, surface water, and subwater. I ask you commissioners to have courage to ask that they not be allowed to bring this to our community. I have a natural prairie, it has never been plowed, ever, and to think that they are going to dump antibiotics and products that they will be feeding to these animals, and it's going to be spread way out in fields, I'm assuming, in liquid form, and it will move beyond that farm, I guarantee you. I just want you to have the courage to realize that if this was coming next door to you, to say that I wouldn't want this as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Patricia Pye, State Representative. I represent Bates and Vernon Counties. I live on a farm, I own a farm, and I'm very glad to be here tonight. I want to thank the commissioners for having this event. I think it's so important for citizens to be heard. As many of you all that are here, there were many, many more than capital when this topic was being discussed and the legislation was being processed. I'm here to listen, I'm here to bring you resources, but as commissioners, as you make your decision, I brought you the legislation, who testified, the articles, pro and con, so I'm here as a resource, and I just wanted to be here to support the citizens and the groups that will be talking tonight.
I'm Ivan Fisher. The other evening, Mr. Wheatley was at a cattleman's meeting, and he said that there would be three commissioners that could decide on this ordinance. And when it comes down to it, there's only two commissioners that have to decide on this ordinance to have a majority. I think that's wrong. I think this needs to be, as a vote, to all of the county, all the county people. I don't think that two people sitting in this room can come down and say that an ordinance is what has to be. I think that's wrong, poor candidate. I've been a cattle producer all my life, and I've produced hogs, I've been a chartered gear salesman my life. That's something that's just part of our life, the smell, that I've been up against that all my life, and I don't think it's done in my growth, or my thinking. Thank you.
Carl Battlesaw, cattle producer here in Bates County. I'm going to go oppose to the ordinance. We've got enough restrictions and things holding us back in the county, besides the fact that the possibility of running off jobs for the community and many other things, it's not right on the surface, but that goes along with it, but I'm opposed.
Marlene.
I'm Colleen Reed, and we are one of the people that live probably about the closest to this proposed farm. And I have done lots of research, and we are in favor of the ordinance. Our communities need county control, not state control. It is not fair to the ones who have spent their entire lives building up family farms to see it crumble under poor air and water control. So I think Bates County needs this health ordinance to protect all citizens from the corporate animal feeding operations. I have no opposing family farms. The organizations that are represented here tonight, I don't think they're speaking for all the members. We are members of Missouri Cattlemen's and Farm Bureau, and we have always thought they were for the family farms, but I'm beginning to wonder. Corporate animal feeding operations are a real threat to the future of agriculture, because they threaten the public health and well-being of neighbors and rural communities as a whole. No one has a moral right to benefit economically at the expense of other people's quality of life. If and when the pharmaceutical-laden manure leaks and gets in the ground affecting the rural water supply, what is the future of the younger generation, or does the ones with financial gain care? Missouri has the weakest safeguards against corporate animal feeding operations in the nation, so we would appreciate it if you would pass this ordinance for the good of the people.
I'm Tom Reed. Like my wife said, we live pretty close to the farm. I think my wife said about everything I had to say, except I would just ask if you ones were four, if they were putting a barn in right next, a mile of their house, would they still feel the same way? I don't think we need out-of-state corporations to come in and more or less run our communities, and that's what will happen.
Austin.
Hello, my name's Austin King. I live about three miles to the east of this proposed Pipestone site. I own and operate a commercial game bird farm. Currently, we're raising about 12,000 pheasants. You know, we're on track to raise about 50,000 pheasants by the year 2025. So this does scare me a little bit. By the definition, in 2025, we will probably be a concentrated animal feeding operation. This is the livelihood that I've chosen to support my family. I am in support of Pipestone and concentrated animal feeding operations, because I believe in individual freedom to do what you want with your property, whether that be to sell or to use how you see fit. You need to be aware of the consequences that come with more bans and restrictions. Please note, I am not a fan of corporate farming. I don't support them from a moral standpoint. It's a real shame they destroyed the small dairy, poultry, and pork operations that used to be across this nation. Now they're trying to do the same with the beef industry, and that is a great concern of mine, as I'm a beef producer as well. However, this is the reality, it's more important to me that the landowner is given the right to utilize their property how they see fit. I know I personally don't want to be told what I can and can't do with my land, more than what we already are. We have far too many laws and restrictions on the book that stifle business. Many concerns I've heard about the health and well-being of the surrounding neighbors, and the long-term effect on the environment. But why does no one ever question the impact row crop farmers have? Herbicides, pesticides, fungicides, chemical fertilizers, all horrible chemicals, most have proven to cause cancer. But I'm dang sure you aren't going to tell these row crop farmers that what they can and can't apply to their crops. So in conclusion, I believe this will be great for the county, more revenue, 12 full-time jobs. I don't believe in a ban or restriction on controlled concentrated animal feeding operations in Bates County. I understand the anger and frustration of my neighbor, but if they put a stop to this hog farm, where will it end?
My name is Terry Hafer. I'm a Bates County, fourth-generation family farm resident. I've worked with cattle feedlots, hog feeders, and poultry feeders for over 40 years, both as a grain supplier and work as a claim advisor for certain insurance carriers. Statistics show that over 25% of concentrated feed operations have an environmental pollution mishap over their lifetimes. From being on the side of CAFOs through the years, I've learned two things. None of them are odor-free, and manure won't run uphill without assistance. Some of them are pretty decent, and some are really nasty. The ones that have some type of quality control plans plus environmental plans seem to be better managed with fewer problems. The ones that have gone to areas with little control and with just for profit in mind seem to end up being problematic, not only to the surrounding areas, but themselves as well. Most large family farm independent CAFOs seem to have fewer problems and more community involved than the larger out-of-state or foreign-owned operations. It seems that to keep a level playing field and to keep our communities safe for us and generations to come, we need some basic and forceful guidelines to preserve our health. The local family farms are community people and can be easily contacted if problems arise. The large out-of-area corporations seem hard to ever find a contact or someone with authority in the immediate area. I'm in favor of a local ordinance that not only protects our citizens' lifestyles and property, but to be able to let our local farm families be competitive as well. Thank you.
Dixie.
Hello, my name is Dixie Hafer, and I'm a lifelong resident of Bates County. I live like a mile and a half from where I was raised on a farm. We had chickens, hogs, and horses, and cattle. I attended, graduated from Chel, both my kids went to Rich Hill system. They received academic scholarships, one with DMU, the other in Pitt State, and our daughter's returned to Bates County, and she has a two-year-old and another one on the way for Christmas. Wishes for them would be to remain in Bates County with healthy air and water. I personally had experience with poultry contamination. One of our neighbors spread litter on his Rennan farm ground. He had a grass buffer to a small creek that drains into our pond, his buffer was not enough. Heavy rains washed the contaminants into the pond, creating a massive fish kill, killing vegetation, instigating blue-green algae, pink algae, and a terrible odor. After spending thousands of dollars on aerators, chemicals, and some dredging, the pond is finally starting to show some vegetation and is clearing up. Our neighbor pledged not to use the litter again, and has said that the commercial fertilizers produce better yields than the animal waste. I am not here to infringe on anybody's family farm and/or their operations. I farm, but from my personal experience, the animal waste products and the manufacture of these wastes from out-of-state interests are not good for Bates County. I'm very worried about the manure dust pathogens that can come into your home through the outside air that draws through your air conditioner heating system. It cannot remove even with a good filtering system. Because of my experience with animal waste and hoping that my children and grandchildren can enjoy the same fresh air and quality that I did as a child, I recommend that commission pass a health ordinance for Bates County. Thank you very much.
Bill.
I'm Bill McElwain. If you can't inject hog manure in the ground, what are you going to do with it? That's the best way I know of, and raise corn behind it. Did it done for 40 years.
Sharon.
I'm Sharon McElwain, and I agree with my husband on this. I really just wanted to come to this meeting, be informed also, so, thank you.
Okay. That is all the registered speakers that we've had. Heard everything that they've said, we have also. Now we can go into the presenters. Each of you has five minutes. If there's more than one of you, you have a combined total of five minutes. We're good, okay. First one up is Bates County residents.
Nobody here. Someone's coming. Oh.
Packed out into the hallway. We can't hear you.
They're doing it.
You want to go first, Lonny?
Come here, come here, stand in front of this hall. You have a total of five minutes between all of you. Now each one has five minutes.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you for arranging this meeting and for taking CAFOs seriously for Bates County citizens. According to Iowa and every state where CAFOs have been allowed to run them up, this is a very serious issue. CAFOs are everywhere, and now states are demanding more regulations. Some are calling for moratoriums to stop new CAFO permits until the consequences of CAFOs are better understood. Iowa groups are suing their own state for the right of clean drinking water. Our public water district bylaws read, "We have the same right." Too many unanswered questions about algae blooms and antibiotic-resistant disease remain unanswered. We need to pause and learn more. Bates County has an opportunity to learn from states who have been CAFO guinea pigs. We can hold CAFOs accountable with the county health ordinance that governs what the Department of Natural Resources sadly does not monitor. CAFO manure has been documented to pollute wells and waterways. Why wouldn't that happen here? It will happen. We ask you to make certain it doesn't by passing a health ordinance. Thanks.
I'm a fifth-generation farmer, so my land's been in my family for over 100 years. First of all, this presentation of the ordinance is not to disallow or ban industrial farming operations. The ordinance simply seeks to provide common sense guidelines for Bates County on how to properly manage the operation without polluting land or water, or intruding on a neighbor's rights to enjoy their farm or their property. NRCS, MU Department of Agronomy, Iowa State University, and Missouri Extension have studied and published resources that were used in the writing of the ordinance. The guidelines refer feeding operations for Bates County are based on sound science and nutrient management plans. Second, the ordinance establishes bonding requirements for CAFOs to clean up their mess. They can't come in from another state, destroy a section of Bates County, and then leave it for all the taxpayers. They can't come in from another state, destroy a section of Bates County, and then leave it for all the taxpayers to clean up. Third, the setback requirements for CAFOs and manure application. CAFO waste manure can currently be spread by spray application 50 feet from a property line. In the ordinance we're requesting to pass, the manure is knifed or injected to the soil to lessen the risk of water contamination. Does one property owner have the right to make another property owner stay inside, never open their windows, and impact how they can enjoy their property? Iowa studies reveal children living next to a CAFO have higher rates of asthma than other farm children. The CDC also references the study with children with increased asthma and respiratory issues and elderly based on a study in North Carolina where dust particles that cause the issues were found up to five miles away.
I'm requesting that the commission adopts the Bates County Health Ordinance model after Len County Ordinance Number 1304. Three, the Len County Commission passed and approved ordinance 1303 on August 6, 2013. The body of the ordinance establishes health regulations for concentrated animal feeding operations. Providing definitions and effective date, providing the serviceability, this ordinance has been successfully tested in court, is in court and of the law. The ordinance provides an active framework for the operation of a CAFO and outlines safe operating practices and/or contamination limits. It also includes County Board of Health and the local experts concerning public health issues relating to the CAFO. Public health must be foremost in the operation of a CAFO. The county commissioners and CAFO management must be the first point of contact for problems relating to CAFO. They in turn would notify the County Board of Health as required. We feel local control must be established to control rural people, our water, our air, our communities, and our health from these absentee, controlled, and now foreign-controlled industrial livestock operations.
Hey, commissioners, for the record, it's not a big deal, but I'm not with FSA. I'm with the local soil and water conservation district. And I got to get that soil and water plug in there whenever I can. And I give Larry, I don't know if he's passed around, some information, and I will be referencing that as I talk. And I want you to know I'm going to be talking at a higher rate of speed than I'm used to and stuff. So I time myself, and I had to cut some stuff out. So anyway, I think I'm here tonight to give you a little insight as what we do on a day-to-day basis at our local soil and water district office out here. I'm a district specialist. I work with landowners and land users, a long range of soil and water resource concerns. We are a voluntary, voluntary agency. We do not set rules and regulations. We are not regulatory. Part of the board's purpose to set objectives, priorities, goals, and conservation for the conservation enhancement of our soil and water resources within the county. We partner with the Natural Resources Conservation Service to aid the SWCD in setting objectives and goals. We offer technical as well as financial assistance. Our technical assistance comes from practice and standards and specifications that provided by NRCS. Neither the state soil and water conservation program nor the local SWCD has ever developed a standard and spec, free practice used within the Department of Natural Resources Soil and Water Conservation Program scope of work. Our financial assistance is in the form of a 75% cost share program, which is a reimbursable program. If you desire to do a practice through us, we will provide you with options for your concerns, if possible, then assist you in selecting the options that best suits you and your land from conservation and economic points of view. Once you make a decision on how to treat your land, then we will formulate a conservation plan and will provide designs, standards, and specifications, job sheets, or whatever is needed for you to implement your practices and apply conservation on the ground. Once practice is complete, we will inspect the work and review the necessary invoices to ensure the practice was done correctly. At that point, you will receive your reimbursement. And let's skip some stuff here. Item one in that packet is a list of practices that the local SWC people may select from to assist landowners within their counties. Per today's meeting, I would call your attentions to items 2A through 2F. And I'm calling, I would like to look, ask you to look at item 2D, because that in particularly is pertaining to our swine waste management practice. The purpose of this practice is to manage waste from agricultural production in any manner that prevents or minimizes degradation of soil and water resources. Such systems are planned to preclude discharge of pollutants to surface or groundwater and to recycle waste through correct soil application to ag land. It applies to where waste is generated by ag production and where the soil and water plant resources are adequate to properly manage that waste. Policies, the intent of this practice is to store animal waste. And I'm just, this is a laughing point here. We have some people who think it's designed to store hay and equipment. It's not, it's not a shed, it's an animal waste facility. Also, all nutrients must be applied in accordance to the Nutrient Management 590 standard. A comprehensive nutrient management plan, CNMP, must be completed and signed by the producer before a contract for an N312 practice can be inserted. The cost share is not authorized for permitted animal waste systems through us. Under the conditions listed in Section 5, Subsection F, which is item three in your packet, basically it says there, "Landowners are eligible to receive cost share assistance on a waste management system, providing the Department of Natural Resources does not require a permit." The only place we could help in those situations is if it was a scope of something outside of the permit, and for an example, maybe you have some water runoff that's running through the system. We could maybe develop, develop a diversion or something to prevent that water from running through, right through the system there. The conservation, the CNMP, we offer $2,000 to defray the cost of developing that CNMP. That comes off the top of the maximum $50,000 that we have available. So $48,000 would go towards the actual installation of the practice. What does the CNMP, I can't say all those big words, encompass? It looks at, and you can look at item four in your packet there. Manure and wastewater handling. Takes into account the type, number of animals, and potential manure generated. Amount of storage required to contain manures collected. How manures will be handled, collection, and land applications. Land treatment practices, application timing, land suitable for effluent applications with. Will include, that will include the proper setbacks and crop utilization rates. Nutrient management, soil sampling, effluent sampling, will all be a part of that. Record keeping is big. When and where manures and effluents are applied. I want to thank you. I have about 30 seconds left.
One thing I forgot, the first group that was in, do either of you have questions for me? I forgot all about, we have, we can ask them questions.
Brad, did I hear you say that this type of operation of CAFOs that the Soil Conservation Department cannot spend money helping them do, take care of this waste and water management?
Through, through our program, through the Soil and Water Conservation Programs, since the CAFO would actually have to be permitted, we would not be helping with those. We would be helping with potential AFROs.
Why is that? Just because of?
It's just the limits that the commission, our Soil and Water Commission just said.
Brad, I have one question. You were talking about inspectors, once everything's put into place. Are they local inspectors, or do they come out of USDA?
It would be an NRCS technician or engineer. Depends on the size of the project. Typically, myself, because of certain liability issues, they don't let local Soil and Water District technicians certify some things. So it just depends on the scope of the project, the size of the project. Probably the maximum would be our area engineer, which is now currently housed out of Springfield.
I was curious, because I didn't think that they would allow the locals to do it because it's a local entity, inspecting the local business.
In reality, that's not really the issue. It's just that as an SWCD technician, an NRCS technician might possibly be able to go out there, which the NRCS technician might be a local guy, or he might be somebody that's coming in from some other part of the state or somewhere.
My name's Brian Smith with the Missouri Rural Crisis Center. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And due to rollbacks in state standards regarding concentrated animal feeding operations, I'll refer to them as CAFOs going forward, health ordinances are the only avenue rural counties have to put in place any safeguards to protect the health and welfare of rural families and communities from the adverse impacts from concentrated animal feeding operations. Now, local elected representatives in 20 rural counties have passed health ordinances to protect their communities from these negative impacts, including common sense setbacks from homes, populated areas, wells, and water sources. Many of these ordinances have been placed for decades, so this is not a new idea. Protecting family farmers, property owners, and citizens that have been there for generations. And in, in the majority of these counties, CAFOs do operate in these counties with the health ordinances. So it is in no way a ban or anything like that that would completely, you know, stop CAFOs from moving in. It just puts some common sense rules of the road in place where they would have to take their neighbors into account in how they operate. Now, CAFOs are targeting Missouri, and a lot of the CAFO operations are out-of-state and foreign operations. And in a public meeting in Cooper County last year, the out-of-state CAFO operation that was presenting stated they were targeting Missouri because we're a clean state. And what they mean by that is we don't have the disease problems and dirty water problems that plague states like Iowa. Iowa has over 10,000 CAFOs, over 700 impaired waterways. And now while not all of that is caused by CAFOs, they are a significant contributor to that. And so whereas Missouri right now just has a little over 500 CAFOs, and we have over 100,000 family farmers, so that's less than one-half of 1%. And so why the state legislature has been so hell-bent on changing rules, rolling back standards to accommodate such a small number of farms at the expense of the vast majority is not good. These CAFO corporations really have no, you know, they're out-of-state and foreign. They have no allegiance to our communities. In fact, two foreign corporations control 49% of the pork in our country. Smithfield, which is a Chinese-owned corporation, and JBS, which is a Brazilian-owned corporation. And the sad truth of it is, the reason why these 20, or actually now 22 counties have established health ordinances is because they discovered, they and their citizens have discovered, that state DNR standards are wholly inadequate to face the risks that are posed by these CAFO operations. Current state standards allow up to 17,499 hogs within 2,000 feet of a residence, and an unlimited number of animals can be located 3,000 feet from a residence. According to an EPA study, a CAFO with 4,000 hogs can generate as much waste as a city of 16,000 people. And a Class 1A CAFO, which is larger than 17,500 hogs, can generate as much waste as the city of St. Louis. There are zero air quality standards for CAFOs with less than 17,500 hogs, 7,000 cattle, or 875,000 chicken broilers. There are no state setback requirements between CAFOs and populated areas. And CAFOs no longer have to obtain construction permits. CAFO waste can be spray-applied 50 feet from your property line, 300 feet from a drinking water well or spring, and 150 feet from a public use area. And that is way too close. And so I imagine you're going to be hearing from some of the speakers that follow me talking about the potential economic dangers or damage that a health ordinance can, can do to a county. You know, as I stated earlier, we've, we've got 22 health ordinances, and most of those have been on the books for a long time, and have CAFOs operating within those counties. They are not driving them out of business. They are not keeping them out there. Just once again, I'll reiterate, establishing common sense rules of the road. What does drive family farmers out of business is the CAFO model of agriculture. Corporate concentration in the hog industry, for example, has harmed both consumers and independent livestock producers. In just one generation, since 1985, the number of hog farmers in Missouri has decreased by 88% from 23,000 to 2,687. From 1985 to 2018, the retail.
I'm sure we'll get some information on this later, but you keep talking about the setbacks and everything. DNR puts setbacks in their ordinance, and the new Senate bill has made those restrictions even more stringent. The setbacks are further now than they were with DNR at the beginning. DNR is going to have to go in and rewrite all of their formats because of this law, if it goes into effect, because setbacks have been increased with this law.
What was the neighbor notice notification? Yes, there was an amendment for that. And they did put some, and they also did put some export-only rules in there, which put those to the current DNR standards, whereas before there were no rules. But still, too close.
That's something that needs to be determined. Austin, later maybe. Zero Rural Crisis, where did you guys come from? Booze and that?
We're a statewide farm and rural organization. We've been around since 1985, formed in response to the original farm foreclosure crisis. We are a member-based organization.
Do you have any corporate sponsors or anything that?
Corporates, I mean, we have received, you know, some grant money, but we are based, we are primarily a member-based organization.
Do your members are local people?
Our family farmers, yeah, right, in Missouri, yeah.
Because it doesn't show anything on the website how, how you came about or who's backing you, who's funding you, or anything else. All right, Bates County Health Center.
I'm Trudy Wellston. I'm the administrator of the Bates County Health Center. I also have my environmental public health specialist back here behind the wall with me.
He's hiding in waiting in the corner.
We've talked about this recently, and as we have expressed in recent conversations with a lot of the individuals, we as a health department are just as concerned as they are about what might lie ahead of Bates County as related to CAFOs. But we do realize there are pros and cons to CAFOs, just as there are to every issue. First, I want to get on the record to address Senate Bill 391. Just to let you know, MOALFA, which is our legislative representative organization for the local public health agencies, testified against Senate Bill 391. Our understanding is that this bill strips away any local control related to large agricultural operations. Currently, DNR is the entity that is responsible for permitting and regulating CAFOs. There have been concerns from citizens as to are they adequately regulating or monitoring CAFOs. I can't confirm or deny those concerns, because that's not an area in which we have any education or training. Water quality, air quality, land degradation, and property values are all concerns that face Bates County in this process. But what are the risks related to water and air quality from CAFO operations? There are current studies indicating that there are health risks, including infected and contaminated bodies of water throughout the U.S., higher rates of asthma in children that live in close proximity to a CAFO. As you know, whatever you look for on the internet, you're going to find it the way you want it. As a local public health department, we are not adequately trained or funded to handle agricultural or environmental concerns. At the state and local levels, we are primarily focused on community health through programs such as immunizations to control infectious disease, communicable disease investigation, inspections of restaurants, motels, daycares, and other licensed facilities, food recalls, truck wrecks involving adulterated food, foodborne outbreaks, along with well-water testing and education, just to mention a few. So onsite sewage is the only natural resource-related public health area that we have adequate training or authority on. As a health department, your concerns are our concerns, but we believe that what the citizens are asking for in this ordinance is something which we are not the entity with the expertise in this field to put into effect. to put into effect. As we've told the commissioners, we're here to assist and provide guidance as needed, to listen to the concerned citizens, take all of it in.
Okay, I'm Dane Deal with the Soybean Council, and I'm also a local farmer. But Derek's also, we're going to split this up, so I'm going to kind of start my time, so I can keep track of my time. And then I'm going to refer it over to Derek. Is that all right, Derek? When we start? Okay. As far as the soybean association side, when Senate Bill 391 came out, we were highly in support of that from the association's side. Anything we could do around the state of Missouri to boost domestic demand of all feedstuffs, not just soybeans, corn, soybeans, wheat, anything in the state, we were in favor of. We fully believe that the regulations placed forward by the DNR, EPA, even USDA governs all in the state, and they do their job significantly. Missouri being one of the leading producers, from my end in soybeans, it obviously hits home. You know, if we can get some more demand here at home, closer to home, Deerfield being a plant close, it's a win for everybody. Markets are off in the soybean world 20 to 30%. One in every three rows was going to China on the soybean side. If we can switch that or get that more closer to home, that's a win for us. As far, as far as the ordinance, this ordinance, it affects everybody in agriculture moving forward, not just, not just here and now, long down the road. And long down the road, it's going to be the young producers, the under 40 people that are going to be significantly affected by it. A young producer, sometimes you're restricted on the amount of land you have. Right now, in today's time, trade wars, everything else going on, if you can try to diversify your operation by adding, adding something else, or try to be profitable to see your generation into the future, that's a win. So Derek, you can take it over from there.
Yeah, Derek Stein, environmental engineer for Missouri Soybean Association, as well as Missouri Corn growers Association. Both associations strenuously oppose this ordinance. They frankly would oppose any restriction or any additional requirement at the county level that would pertain to agriculture. There's one government entity in the state that's adequately trained, staffed and trained to really do a justice to an environmental regulatory program for CAFOs, and that's the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. They rely on the expertise of the State Department of Health as well when they, when they take regulations into consideration. I worked for DNR for 10 years. Six years I oversold statewide the permitting regulatory program for CAFOs. I know this issue very well. The state obviously has set stringent requirements for CAFOs already, so much of what you have proposed is redundant. I disagree wholeheartedly with some of the statements regarding whether this ordinance right now will allow CAFOs to continue in this county. It will not. Lynn County, which this obviously is based solely upon, has not had a CAFO, has not had a new facility come into that county since this has went into place. It is a ban on its face. Whatever else you call it is simply, is simply not true. It will absolutely prohibit and restrict agricultural operations from coming into this county from now until the future if it's written like this. No question, every other county like it, that's been the case. Lastly, I don't think the county understands the legal implications that they're taking on if they pass this. There will be litigation. There will be lawsuits either between the person trying to acquire a permit, or the people that are upset that a permit's been issued at the county level. Those lawsuits will be litigated, and you will be involved. Who's going, who's going to litigate those for you? Where are those, where are those funds going to come to defend this ordinance from a legal perspective, legal standpoint? Is your prosecuting attorney, or is he behind this? Because he's going to be pulled into this as well. Do you have the environmental staff to actually do the testing or to do the verification that compliance is, is within the bounds of this ordinance? We've just heard from the health department that they don't believe they have the expertise to do that. Who's going to do that? Where is those costs going to come from? Who's going to fund that? Lots of open questions, lots of unanswered questions. At the end of the day, what is the problem that we're trying to solve with this? I haven't heard of a problem yet. Okay? I hear a lot of people don't like CAFOs. I hear a lot of people say they don't want a CAFO nearby their farm. But I haven't heard of a legitimate environmental issue or problem stated yet that, that requires an extensive ordinance like this. It's overkill at every level, especially given the fact that we already have regulations on the books at the state level with DNR, as well as, as well as at the federal level with EPA. Yes, EPA regulates CAFOs as well. There's staff that come out of Kansas City that regulate, that inspect CAFOs, as well as staff from Missouri DNR. I think they're here as well, so they'll have some points to, to make as well with regard to what they do around CAFOs. Thank you again, just to reaffirm, we oppose any ordinance enacted on agriculture.
My name's Dave Yarke. I'm one of the proposed site landowners in the southwest of Bates County. Been there all my life, as most of the people have. What experience, what knowledge I have of this is not something I read on the internet. It's not something I asked somebody else over the phone. It is personal experience. I've been on the farms where the barns are located. I've talked to the landowners where the barns are located. If you'd like to talk to me, I'll talk to you. I'm not, I'm not reading on the internet to get my information. I'm going firsthand to the person that has the barn.
David, a question. How did you, did you come up with this plan?
I was contacted by a lending agency, said there was a company looking to invest in the community and grow hogs, and they were looking for landowners with land available for a budget.
So you have considerable amount of land down there?
Yes.
And all required, this is the size of CAFO that you're-
Way more than what they require.
I'm a brother to Dave. If he's still here all the time, I'd just, would like to say, I know some of the concern is against corporate farming. Pipestone isn't unique. They're not corporate farmers. They own no hogs. They're a management company. So the hog farmers are guys like us.
Do you have personal money in this project?
No. I'm a brother to Dave. We're-
Well, I mean, what I heard him say is that-
We have the opportunity to be one of the hog owners if we choose to be.
Do you?
The owner, we have not made that choice yet. The owners of the hogs in the proposed building are farmers. Pipestone does not own any of the animals in that building. They are a pet service and a management company.
Who, who are these farmers?
Anybody that, that could be-
It's an organization of farmers, Dan?
It's, it's anybody that Pipestone had contact with and wants to infest, wants to be a pig on. It could be out of state, it could be in-state, it could be the landowner, it could be anybody.
So Pipestone's a management company?
Correct.
And they own nothing?
And they, they will, they will attest to that when they speak.
The, this one, will I see? David, I would ask, in regard to impact, I'll come into your location, how will that impact, say, corn? Are, do you have any kind of-
There's, there's figures been thrown around. It should increase the, the local market for corn, and so it needs to. I mean, it takes a, I, I don't have that information. But I mean, I'm not a speaker. I didn't come to speak. I'm a farmer. I barely got time to do what I need to do. It should help the rice harvest.
I'm Gary Cook. I'm a landowner. And right now, Pipestone's putting one of these big farms, I'm on a farm, and I have a shop that's probably only a quarter of a mile from this. Like David said, that they are not the people that own the thing. There's a fellow from Kansas City that owns the land, owns the building. There's a farmer from Iowa, he's going to own all the hogs. All the pigs will go to his farm. So he's going to be the one feeding the hogs out. As far as the CAFO, yes, I had a CAFO permanent. And you don't need any other regulations. DNR will take care of everything for the CAFO. Anyway, it's very well regulated through the DNR, taking care of all the pollution, everything on it. The pre-lot that I had, I don't think I could stand any more regulations that DNR had. As far as pollution, there was farmers that had a lot less animals that was doing a lot more pollution than any CAFO project ever. Anyway, I guess that's all I could say.
And I would ask you the same, Gary. As far as manure, I suppose, will be used by you, or, okay? And then as far as corn and crop for feed, what is your arrangement?
I don't have any at this point. They haven't said where they're getting their feed for that population.
You were talking about the pigs in the race on your side, who we ship to Iowa. So they're going to have boars and sows on your property that produce the pigs? Or are they just going to have pigs born at another location brought to you to feed for-
Pipestone, explain that a little more. I don't really know their operation. It's just what you, what you have here. If they're just going to pig out sows, they will probably breed them. And me, I am, I don't know whether they'll have boars.
The sows will be at your facility, and then they'll-
Right.
Pig, and then heat up to, we hear that basically 55 pounds. Does that sound about right? And then they ship them?
I think it's going to be more like 15 pounds.
15, so as soon as they just basically get weaned, they're picked, picked up and sent out?
And they're going to go to an Iowa farmer. And there'll be a farmer up there that'll feed them.
I'm Heather Peters. I'm with Missouri Department of Natural Resources. I'm the industrial department's junior chief, so it's my team that actually, Department's in a hurry to fix CAFOs. With me today, I have Kristy Savage-Clark. She is with our enforcement team. They are the ones that deal with any non-compliance or problems associated with a CAFO. And I also have Karen Rowsey. She is the director of our Kansas City Regional Office. They're the folks that go out and do the inspections. So today, all we're here to discuss is what we do to regulate a CAFO. The department does not have a position on whether a county should take an ordinance or not. We do not implement, enforce, or take any action on local ordinances. So any violations found are not ones that we address. We only address issues that are under the state regulations. So what we're going to talk about is CAFOs and what we do to regulate them. So let's start with the construction of it. It was mentioned that we don't require construction permits anymore. That doesn't mean we don't have construction requirements. In an age of trying to streamline and get rid of paperwork, the paperwork requirements to get a permit have been changed. But the requirements on what you have to do to build a CAFO still remain the same. There are standards for how you have to build a lagoon, and those, because they are very special, do require a special construction permit and a lot of extra activity. If you have tanks and pits, like under a hog barn, those are things that also have construction standards, that they have to demonstrate that they can meet before we can approve a permit. They have to meet neighbor notice requirements. They have to prove that they have a legal entity that is valid to take care of this facility. They also have to show that they can manage the animals and all of the manure generated. A CAFO does have to account for every bit of manure that is generated. They have to control it. They have to make sure they handle it properly, and they have to make sure that they have no discharge. All CAFO permits are no discharge permits. They do not have permission to discharge from their facilities, and they do not have permission to discharge from any of their waste containment systems. They also have land application requirements. So at a permitted CAFO, when you go out to do land application, there are more than just the setback requirements that are built into a permit. They actually have to prove and tell us what they're doing, how they're doing it. We set restrictions on how you can do land application of the manure and the waste at these facilities. In addition to also telling us how much they're going to generate, where they're going to apply it, and what they're going to do with it, they also have to show us how they're going to manage the nutrients associated with this. That means that this is a very site-specific evaluation that we do. So when they tell us they're going to apply manure, we look at what their fields are, what they're going to be growing, how much uptake there is from those crops. Different crops take up different amount of nutrients to ensure that they're not running off. We double check what that's going to be, and we set standards for those. Those aren't standards set just by DNR. They're established by a whole group of people, including the entities that you mentioned too, like the Missouri, University of Missouri Agricultural Center. So there's a lot of science that goes into how much you can do as their uptake of nutrients, and we have to manage all of that prior to us ever issuing a permit. Like I said, there are no discharge permits. In addition to the permits, once we issue a permit, once they have proven that they can handle all the manure that they're going to generate, once they've told us exactly what they're going to do with that manure, where they're going to land apply it, once they tell us how they're going to contain that manure, once they tell us how they're going to ensure that stored water outside of this facility doesn't run through the facility and wash through. You can't have water running through your facility and then running out of these buildings. That is actually something they have to address prior to getting a permit. Once they tell us all those things, we can potentially issue a permit for those facilities. Then the next step is those facilities get regularly inspected by our folks out of our Kansas City Regional Office. They're trained on how to do inspections. They know how to inspect these facilities, and they're looking for any signs of a problem, any signs of a potential problem, any signs of runoff or discharge, and all of those would be addressed. If for some reason, they couldn't get that addressed through normal channels and through compliance efforts, then we have Kristy's team. They can take enforcement action. And they take enforcement action when someone isn't doing what they need to be doing. If there's been a problem, even if it was, whether it was intentional or not, if there's a problem, they get involved with making sure that it's cleaned up, that everything's addressed, that everything is, if there's a stream impact, they're going to make sure that that's rectified and those problems are addressed, in addition to potentially assessing penalties against these CAFOs. So these CAFOs are regulated by DNR from start, where we initially permit them, to inspection, to enforcement if the need arises. Other than that, I mean, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. But again, all of our CAFO permits are no discharge permits, and those permits do set very specific limits for how they operate, how they maintain, and how they do their land application, if they get the permit, and demonstrate that they meet all of the requirements that come before that.
Also, when we do inspect, when Karen's people inspect the CAFOs, the largest of the CAFOs are inspected four times as often as EPA requires. They're required once a year. We go out four times a year quarterly and inspect those.
Well, she kind of answered that. So the size of CAFO considered here, how often will you be inspecting those?
These would be inspected, I believe, either once a permit cycle, or 10% of the facilities are inspected every year. Depends on which permit we end up issuing to that facility.
So this size would be once a year?
No, that's, that's the largest size of ones that are quarterly. Permit cycles are five years. I'm sorry. Permit cycles are five years. So some of our facilities are every five years. Some of them, it's 10% of our facilities that are inspected every year.
Do you really feel that that gives you an idea of what's happening?
Well, let me explain that. Maybe Karen would like to jump in too. Those are inspections are the bare minimum. If we have complaints, we have concerns, we have, we get self-reporting. A CAFO operator will call us and tell us, hey, we had an issue. What do we need to do? And believe it or not, that happens a lot more often than you think. And so all of those would require an inspection or investigation. And so Karen, do you want to chime in on the other things that they do? But they inspect them way more frequently than the bare minimum.
We inspect air quality concerns, water quality concerns, either anonymous or otherwise. If we get a report in that there has been a suspected or, like she said, self-reporting, we come out and we take each one of those instances very seriously. We investigate for the facts. We don't side on pro or con. It's all about the facts. And then we see if they adhere to the regulations, and then report back to the concerned party. If, if a name is given, we contact that party after the fact, and then we keep a log of all of those concerns or, and/or complaints, and for a public review.
What's been your most active enforcement concern or actions?
If I take your question at, at exactly what you said, my biggest problem is subdivisions and mobile home parks. Cause me more pollution problems than anything else in the state, bar none.
Cause me more pollution problems than anything else in the state, bar none.
Okay.
If you want to ask more about specific sites and KFOs, I can kind of give you...
Let's narrow it down. Just consider KFOs and what is your most common enforcement problem?
My most common enforcement problem is an accident involving... The most I've had recently are small AFOS, which are not permitted. They're too small to be permitted KFOs. And I have some of those that have had some incidents recently with breaking a pipe and then the manure leaks out. And so we have to figure out how to clean it up, and if there's been some negligence or if they should have known better, then there's a penalty involved. And the worse the negligence or the longer it went on, then the higher the penalty is.
As in money?
As in money, yeah.
Okay. I would ask you, in the case of a violation or spill or whatever, how are the costs covered and to what extent? I mean, obviously, if it was a bad leak or bad spill, got into waterway, that could result in six, seven-figure...
Yes, sir.
Who covers that? Who's responsible for that? Is it collected? Is it rarely collected or what?
We are very, very careful about determining who is responsible, and it ends up being the owner that has the permit is responsible for that. And we break it out several different ways, the costs. There's an actual administrative penalty, which is more likely to be assessed if we have some sort of negligence or, you know, you should have known better to maintain the pipes better or not let these animals run across these pipes and things like that. We also have costs, what we call recovery costs. We charge fees for our permits, and if we have to go out, if Karen's people get called out on something other than a regularly scheduled inspection, then we're going to want to collect some extra money for that because we weren't planning for that in our budget. And if we have to do cleanup, we want those costs reimbursed. If our emergency response people have to go out and dam something up to stop manure, then we're going to want to be reimbursed for that. And if there have been wildlife losses, fish and things like that, we're going to want that to be cleaned up, and we're going to want that to be reimbursed as well. So there's costs for wildlife damage, there's costs for cleanup, there's costs for staff time to investigate these things, and then there's an administrative penalty. So it really does add up all the time.
So in the end, the facility pays all of that, or you rarely collect all of it? Or what's the record?
Our current procedure is to look at what all we have and assess what we think is a fair cost for all of that and ask the owner to pay that back.
Ask or force?
Ask, and if they don't pay it, we go to court.
One more question.
We usually turn in general's office when we go to court and look to collect all that kind of stuff.
And I think the one thing to kind of clarify is the first order of business when someone has a problem like this, is ensure we figure out what happened, what went wrong, and make sure it will not happen again. Sometimes it can't be prevented, but sometimes if there's things that they weren't doing one-hundred percent properly, or maybe they could do better, that's the first thing we go looking for. Once we stop the immediate problem, is making sure that we fix the problem. So that's...
Okay, my other question is, in your permitting, you pretty much probably regulate the permit holder and how they apply it. But if that permit holder sold it to a second or a third party, do you have any regulation over that?
So the new Senate Bill 391 does actually add new requirements for anyone that accepts a liquid manure from a regulated KFO. There are setback requirements now. They too would be subject to the same... So we have those requirements that would be in place. They would have setback requirements, and they would have something similar to what KFO owners have for any liquid waste. We also have rules and requirements and statutes that clearly state that if you have runoff from any... It doesn't even matter if it's a KFO or agriculture, this can be anything. If you have runoff that causes harm to any of the waters of the state of Missouri, then we can hold you responsible for that runoff. So that's true of industry, that's true of agriculture, that's true of domestic waste like landfills or... I'm sorry, like sewer systems and other things like that.
So I guess, maybe I wasn't totally clear, but we've spent many hours calling and asking and trying to research all of this, but we got conflicting answers pertaining to knifing or injecting requirements. Does that... Is that a has-to case, or is that a recommended...
Specifically the knifing or injecting? That is not a has-to. They do have to do land application in a manner that will prevent runoff. They do have to meet the setback requirements, but it doesn't specifically say how you have to do that. We give a lot of wiggle room on what is potential mechanisms for doing that, because every time we turn around, there's new technology out there that may give an even better way. Some of our facilities have hard pipe systems in place that prevents a lot of these accidental damage that we're talking about. Some facilities have very complex watering systems tied into their system, so they don't have overflows, they don't have runoff from their sites. It varies a lot, and we do intentionally allow some variation, so long as, again, they're controlling that land application of the waste. But no, we do not require it to be specifically applied in any set manner.
Okay, thank you. I've got one question. I'm trying to figure out how we're... You were stating that you would ask the people to either do these, made a comment that you would take them to court. Would they, when their application came up for renewal, if they had five hundred thousand dollars' worth of expenses to pay DNR for mitigation issue remaining, would their permit be revealed?
I think our enforcement tools allow us a lot of options. That would be potentially something. Honestly, I don't think we have a lot of them that don't do compliance efforts. Like she said, we're talking about sites that have KFO permits versus sites that don't. And a lot of our problems do come from unpermitted, unregulated facilities, so those are harder.
But those that have permits, you had issues where they didn't pay it and you had to rescind the permit?
You know...
At renewal time?
We have not, and it is an option. We can at any time rescind the permit.
At any time?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have to wait until the renewal?
Nope.
Because it adds three years left on the renewal.
And we also have an option on those unregulated sites to require permitting as part of their enforcement action for addressing problems. So those non-regulated sites can be helped to the same standard.
And that is an option we have. We have several AFOS in the state that are currently required to have a permit, even though they don't need permitting, they don't have that many animals.
So they're...
Because they have a problem, they had a problem, and we said, I'm sorry, you're being negligent, you've had a problem with pollution, so now you're going to have to have a permit because that's only fair.
Thank you. Okay. Missouri Farm Bureau.
Oh, well, I would have jumped up or something. My name is Leslie Holloway, and I'm Senior Director of Regulatory Affairs for Missouri Farm Bureau. I'd like to make some comments, but we also have County Farm Bureau leaders here, so I think Levi might be speaking, and when I finish here, then we'd like to have them join in. What you've just heard from DNR really is what I would want to focus on, at least to begin with. But what I think you've heard is that you have a very active, capable group of people who are overseeing the KFO operations in Missouri. And if they were to talk to you about the actual water quality situation in Missouri statewide, they could also tell you that you don't have the water problems that you're hearing from some sources are a problem. Missouri does a great job of regulating KFOs. And in fact, I just found a study this week out of Iowa where the writer, who was an attorney, was actually lamenting the way Iowa handles KFOs in that state, and they cited Missouri's regulations as actually being strict. They said that most states don't regulate KFOs strictly enough, but they cited Missouri as an example of a state that does. And so with what we have going on in our state, we would just urge you to please take into account how we handle things here and be very wary of the stories that you're going to hear from other states where there are many, many more KFOs that are not overseeing as carefully as they are here. Those states are much different from Missouri, and if you talk about what's going on in North Carolina, I don't want to spend a lot of time tonight, but I actually make a point to try to do a lot of research to try to come up with more specifics about states. I have information that outlines the nature of agriculture in states. The Ag Statistic Service puts together county profiles as well as state profiles on agriculture, and there is one for Bates County if you're interested or have not seen that. But it is pretty pertinent to the discussion to understand the differences in agriculture between the various states and the concentrations that there are in other states that are not in Missouri. There have been some allegations with regard to the ordinances that can address issues that are not necessarily addressed in state regulations, but I think that DNR, what DNR has presented to you, pretty well indicates that that's not the case. DNR does have standards in place, design standards and other types of standards that apply in those situations. We would certainly oppose putting any additional restrictions on at the county level because we just don't see, we don't see the justification for it. In addition to all the economic and the other arguments, the regulatory arguments are deadly, and we just don't see any justification for trying to go overboard with additional county regulation. And I think that I would turn the balance of my time over to Levi or whoever wants to speak on that.
My name's Levi Rap. I'm Bates County Farm Bureau President. I'm from down around the Rockville area. I've lived and been involved with agriculture my entire life. I'm coming to you tonight, speaking on behalf of a young farmer. I'm a young farmer, and, you know, we heard a lot about regulations, we heard a lot about different things. And to kind of echo, you know, what DNR and Leslie said, that there's a lot of things in place, there's these rules and regulations in place already, and I think that we're going overkill with having this county ordinance, and I'm strongly opposed to that, but looking forward to my future, you know? I've only been farming with my dad and uncle for two years now, like full-time farm. And I just look at the future of agriculture. I look at how big things are getting, just to make it as an individual operator or as a family farm. A lot of these corporations, they start out as family farms. And I think, you know, down the road, you know, you never know what the future will hold. But I strongly believe that having an ordinance in place or, you know, going more stringent than what state law already is, could hinder, you know, future aspects or future plans for young farmers in Bates County. So I'm against it. I think that the state is already doing a great job, and I just want opportunities available for the young farmers and for the future of this county. So that's all I've got to say.
I'm Sharon Arnold, and I'm also with the Farm Bureau. And I just want to speak... That was my final...
Sorry.
Levi said what I wanted to say.
Al, do you have anything to add?
Leslie here.
Yes.
My family on both sides are hundred centric farms in this county, and we're proud of that. We chose not to grow and farming and didn't move away particularly, but we didn't increase in size as the farms have now. But the latest comment that struck me earlier over there, Mrs. Reed, was she felt that the Farm Bureau had abandoned the smaller companies, the smaller farmer, in favor of corporations. How do you answer that face-to-face with them?
Well, and we do have those discussions, you know? We have a policy development process where we bring members in from all counties at our annual meeting in December, and everybody gets to vote on what our policy positions will be. Those policies are all posted online, they're available for anybody to review. But any member who is a delegate from a county farm bureau can come in and make a suggestion that will be considered by all the delegates to decide. But in a nutshell, we support any size of agriculture operation as long as they're in compliance with laws and regulations. You know, if they're doing something, there are bad actors out there, we don't support that. We don't want anybody to be degrading the environment or affecting anybody else's operation. But if they're in compliance with laws and regulations, then that's what this country's all about. I mean, we think that there's a different style of farming that works for different families, and we support all of it, we need all of it, you know? We've got to have that kind of production for the global market that we have these days. So that's really the answer to, I think, to that question, is we aren't choosing, you know, choosing sizes. And you ask someone, what's the right size of a farm, and you'll get, you know, a different answer from anybody you ask. So we don't want to try to draw that line.
Sharon, do you want to answer anything to his of what she said? I didn't know if you did. I have a question. Pipestone.
Good evening, thanks. My name's Nick Fitzgerald. I'm actually a family farmer pork producer that's involved with the Pipestone system. And we also have Dr. Steve Mickey here, who's a veterinarian with Pipestone. So to describe a little bit about what Pipestone is. Pipestone's a veterinary service clinic that was founded in nineteen forty-two. We have six mixed animal practices with a specialty in swine production. The Pipestone system, which is the sow management piece of our business, is an independent pork producer, farmer-owned, just like my dad, brother and I, as independent pork producers. We own shares in the Pipestone system, along with four hundred and sixty other farm families across the Midwest. The mission statement for Pipestone is to advance animal care every day with the goal of helping farmers today create the farms for tomorrow. And I want to talk a little bit about why livestock production is important to Missouri and the Midwest in general. Why is livestock important, whether it's cattle, hog, sheep, poultry? The backbone of our communities, our rural communities, is agriculture and ag economy. We have grain available to feed the livestock. We have terrific infrastructures to move livestock and feedstuffs around. We've got access to folks with good work ethics and animal husbandry skills. It's that Midwest work ethic. We've got an available workforce specifically here in Bates County with the unemployment rate at four-point-six percent as of June, tied for the fifteenth highest in the state of the circle. So these types of opportunities, livestock opportunities, will help create jobs and development for this. And again, what motivates Pipestone is the farm families that we work for, whether they raise a few pigs or a few thousand. We have clients of all shapes and sizes within the Pipestone system, okay? Now, to shift gears a little bit to talk about the farm, this farm specifically, we engineer the farms from the Pipestone system standpoint. We use third-party engineers to engineer and cite the farms with us. This farm specifically is a zero-discharge facility, so it's a deep-headed farm with the animal housing above where the nutrient storage will be. The farms themselves will consist of really three structures that house animals. One's going to house the gestation barn, will house the pregnant females. The farrowing barn is where the pregnant females go to have their litters of piglets and nurse their piglets. And then the third structure on the farm would be a guild developer. This is where we would bring in incoming or the next generation of mothers into this farm. Outside of that, we have two other structures on the facility. One's a storage shed for tractor and supplies. And the fifth one would be a compost facility that would be our method of choice for managing this beast livestock. In terms of what this farm will provide, this farm will provide pigs, a healthy source of piglets to farm families, whether they be in Iowa, Minnesota, Missouri, South Dakota, Illinois. We have clients in nine states today. We have clients in nine states today with folks that really have strong interest and passion and continue to diversify their family farms and focusing on the downstream weed to finish production as they diversify their farm operations. All of our farms are equipped with cafeterias in there as well for our employees. We have a cook onsite that prepares meals for the employees while they're on the farm. And a farm like this that's being proposed at the site and frankly up for discussion tonight will staff approximately 18 full-time individuals. The average annual payroll for a farm like this is going to be approximately $1.26 million in salary, benefits, employee retirement packages. This farm will purchase their feed locally. Do we know where the farm will purchase feed today? We don't know if the farm will exist yet today. So no, we don't have an answer to that, but a farm of this size would use about 180,000 bushes of corn.
You mentioned compost there on the site and compost sticks to me. How do you handle that just far as the composting process?
Have much less odor than poorly managed composters have a very pungent smell, but it all depends on the carbon source and how much material is involved with the composting process. So our composters are equipped with temperature probes. We have watering systems in there to manage the compost material in there, but really the key behind managing the composting process in itself is to maintain the bacteria and the heat inside the composter to appropriately dispose of the animals.
What do you do with the compost?
So the compost material really gets recycled quite regularly. So we would use a bay within the composter that is, the process has been completed so the animals have been effectively composted. We would use that and move that and add that to the next bay as we continue to move on down the lines within the compost structure itself. And after a year, we'll have some material that would be land-applied. It would be similar in nature to a chicken litter bed pack type consistency that would be land-applied.
So you would apply that?
Once the used compost material is, or the compost material is.
So you eventually got to put that compost leftovers away and then searate back on the ground?
It would be land-applied after, yes.
Liquidified and injected?
It's dry litter matter, so it would be land-applied dry litter.
Has this process proven to be good control of infections? I know you mentioned you bring, you're going to bring in the prospective sows from somewhere. Why don't you develop them from the ones you already have, the pigs you develop? Do you, or you said you bring them in, where do they come from? I know disease is a big problem in the hog industry.
It is, for sure.
And we're not kind of disease clear down here, so we're a prime candidate for its base. So how do you, where are you going to bring these hogs in? You'd be able to handle disease from somewhere else possibly?
So we would, go on.
Go on, answer that question because it pertains to Missouri. We have two farms in Missouri that are multiplication farms. So that's a farm that multiplies and makes the parent animals for our other farms. And so it's likely that this farm will own a small percentage of one of our multiplication farms. And those pigs that are produced at the multiplication farm are under even a higher status of health than what this farm would be. So we rate the status of health at our farms from one through five and a multiplication farm is one. A farm that we feel is basically disease-free would be two and one with African swine fever would be five and a half. And so we rate them like that. So the pigs would come to this farm at 14 pounds and it'd be a small number of pigs, probably someplace around 350 pigs at 14 pounds would come into this farm every five to six weeks. And at the same time, the production of this farm, approximately 3,000 pigs would leave every week. And so that's how it would be handled. Now, we have had one farm and two farms in Missouri where we multiply the animals internally. So we have grandparent animals as well as production animals in the farm. And so then we make our own within the farm, okay? That hasn't been, that part of the business plan hasn't been fully decided for this particular farm, but so I can't tell you whether we're going to bring in 14-pound pigs or whether we're going to make our own within. Yes, I got the floor. Are there, is there plans for more? Have you selected other areas in our county as a possibility for CAFO?
I'd answer that question if my position is ahead of development and there's a, there's a feeling or a sense that we'd go two miles from this site and build another one or five miles from another site. We're not going to spend that much money at this site and put another farm right next to it. So would we go 25 miles away or would we go 30 miles away or would we go 20? We might go 20 and as you know, it's already been discussed tonight that we are doing a site in the complete opposite corner of your county. So whether that's 30 miles or whatever it is, there's a possibility that 30 miles apart of it, we're not going to spend that much money and jeopardize our investment by building something next door. So is there going to be another farm in that township? No. Or within 10 miles or 15 miles? No.
So at this point, nothing, no other location in this county is being considered?
We have no agreements with anybody in this county at this time.
Do you have with you tonight the CNMP, CNMP thing that we can look at? The comprehensive manure management plan?
No, that manure management plan will be developed after the permit is issued.
So they have to give the food?
No.
Well, when they, if they're going to submit a permit application, they do have to give us a manure management plan. And before we would issue a permit, that would have to be reviewed, make sure it details what they're going to be doing. It does have to generate, it has to account for how much manure is going to be produced by the size of animals that'll be at that facility up to the full capacity of that facility that they're permitted to. They would have to prove that they have adequate storage, there are storage requirements and we do have.
That's all, yeah, that is all the permitting and you're correct, it's all within the permit application, but as far as the, here's the field, we put 5,000 gallons an acre injected into the soil or whatever, obviously we don't have that at this time, but that plan is going to have to be added to and record-keeping work. Daily or weekly, we'll keep track of how many inches are in the manure containment facility and all those things, but she's exactly right that we know from the calculations how many animals, how much each animal weighs, how many gallons of waste is going to be produced. We know how big our storage is, we're accounting for what if we can't haul it, but if we don't have enough storage, we've got adequate storage to meet the requirements that can be handled.
I've heard discussion that the storage is required the whole year's worth.
That's accurate. We normally apply twice a year, spring and fall, and we do that because we don't want to have a problem that you have a late fall or an early spring or whatever, so we don't want to ever be in a situation that, we also feel that this location's very favorable to us because you have a lot bigger window of application here than you would have 50 miles north or 100 miles north or your season should be longer here too, but we have adequate storage and we will apply twice a year.
I actually have the numbers on their permit application. Again, this is not a permit that's been issued yet, so I can't say that we've 100% approved this and reviewed it, but on their application, they provide 640 days of storage.
600?
Yes, the regulatory requirement is 180. We recommend 365 if the specific site, which we're not going to necessarily speak on a specific site, but this one's 640 that you're asking about.
So plenty of.
Again, we're still in the review process.
Looking for something. Pretty much everything's been answered. You started giving the amounts on sows and how many people are going to be employed. Site that is getting ready to be helping run Mr. Cook's. Is it going to be similar to this one as far as the amount of employees and the ability of personnel to be utilized there?
It would be very similar in terms of size and scale of the farm, yes. Not exactly carbon copies of one another, but.
In the proximity.
Within a couple 300 animals.
Yep.
I'm talking about the employment.
Oh, the employment would be the same, it's going to be someplace between 17 and 20.
Because this one thing that we want to make certain that we got a lot of people that need jobs. We got a lot of people that couldn't hold a job, stuck them to the wall, but that's another story. But I think there's a big concern that there will be a lot of out-of-towners coming to Bates County to work in these facilities. Are you trying to hire as many local Bates County citizens as you can?
I'd like to address that. We have an HR department and we have an HR department that's at our headquarters in Pipestone, Minnesota and also an HR department that's at my office in Etomo, Iowa and they'll be in charge of staffing the farm. I would, I would feel that probably we'd bring two or three people in leadership positions from our other farms. As Nick said, we have 75 other farms in the U.S. And that's one of the reasons, one of the ways that we have quality workers is because we give young workers or young employees an opportunity to move up our system. If they hire with just a strictly one farm independent person, there's no place for people to go as they advance. So in our system, they can move from somebody that runs a power washers to somebody that works in farrowing to somebody that leads the farrowing team, that leads the gestation team, to be a manager. So we bring two or three people to this area most likely in leadership. Once in a while on a new farm, we find somebody to be a leader. At Cape Girardeau, Missouri, we hired a manager for the farm that was a CPA that was from Cape Girardeau. So if we get a rare, that's a pretty rare opportunity, but we'll get those kind of opportunities on occasion. After that, we hire locally as many people as want to apply that can meet our needs for the ability to provide animal husbandry and animal care. We do recruit internationally. We recruit college graduates internationally. So if we have to fill in with two or three or four or whatever, but we participate in what's called the TN visa program and I would expect that if we don't have enough people locally, then we would hire people. But our main goal is you'll see a strong, this farm comes to pass, you'll see a strong effort by HR team to be in this county. And that's one of the things in site selection. We're not going to do a site selection in the middle of nowhere where there's no population. So we know that there's population here, we know that there's unemployment and that's one of the reasons why we chose this site. We think we can hire people here.
Good question for you again.
Sure.
The people that are going to benefit most from this is the cooks and the yaricks, the pipestone. He gets, they get the fertilizer to enhance their props and stuff around there. So, and maybe 20 tops of those or whatever for that facility, hopefully local people. Is that, I guess I'm trying to get at, what's that, that's benefit to one person? I'm not for anybody not making money, don't get me wrong, I like money too, but it seems like all this big operation, most of the money goes. How do you answer that?
Sure, sure. Good question. I don't agree with that statement and here's why. The farms that my dad, brother and I are involved with.
I'm talking right here in this county.
Yep, exactly. And I'm going to share with you, this is an example of why. We have five other farm families that are partnered up with us on this farm. My dad, brother and I aren't able to take the entire farm's worth of production right out of a sow farm of this size, so we have a network and this is where the Pipestone system really shines is it's a network of independent farmer families that are able to use one another's volumes to help create more competitive opportunities to be able to compete with the large integrated businesses. We couldn't do that today. I'm confident and I could say that with 100% confidence. Our pork production business, if we were 100 sows fair to finish like we were, we would not exist today without the Pipestone system because it takes larger, high health, high quality sow farm performance to be able to compete with the large corporate entities that exist out there in the marketplace. So does Pipestone benefit from that? Absolutely. Pipestone's a veterinary service provider. Pipestone benefits from it. The families we work with on the, on the land side benefit from a nutrient perspective. The pig owners, they're the ones who get the big benefit from that because they're getting a healthy source, a high-quality healthy source in a volume that's able to garner the attention of the packers out there in the pork business. So.
I'd like to answer that in a different manner. So that, that site for an example would be that site is going to have trees and bushes and things planted around there. We'll try to find a place to buy the trees and bushes locally and we'll hire a landscape person to plant them. We'll hire, we might hire the people that are in our cemetery to go out there and mow that like a city park. We're going to buy LP gas from whoever we can get it from at a decent price that's within range. You said where are the feed going to be made? We don't want to truck the feed, we want to buy the feed as close as we can because we don't want to pay the transportation. So we're going to buy diesel fuel for our tractor, we're going to go to the John Deere place and buy the tractor. We're going to do as many things as we possibly can. We don't want to buy wash machines and buy them from Pipestone, Minnesota. Tell us where the best place to buy them is, you know? And what's really going to be an influence is on an ongoing basis. So when we build this farm, it's not over. So there's maintenance and repairs and things like that that continue to come up. Transportation trucks, we don't know if the trucks are going to be based in central Iowa, at Pipestone, Minnesota, or the trucks can be based here. We built a farm, as I told you, with the south of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and the local person is now in the trucking business with two tractors and three trailers and he's pulling trailers every day for us all over the Midwest. So those are the kind of things that are going to bring additional things that to some extent, Nick will provide you with an economic impact statement for this farm and some of those things will be discussed, but it's not just Pipestone and the landowner and who's getting the pigs. It's a wide array of things. We're going to have 20 people buying gas at the gas station at that Pete's place to get to the plant, get to the farm every day. The traffic is mostly going to be workers. You know, there's going to be six semi-loads of feed, three loads of pigs in or out of there a week and that's going to be it for the traffic. The worst real traffic is going to be the workers that are going there for a job, but that's all going to generate money. They're going to get a decent paycheck, they're going to go and buy a car, whether it be a new car or a used car, buy a refrigerator or a couch.
Appreciate that. Yep, I'm done.
I have two or three questions for you. The method of application you all use is?
Our preferred method of application would be what we call the umbilical cord or the dragline. It's a tool bar that is pulled by a tractor that has a hose connected to it with the pump connected on the other side of the farm. And so from a road traffic perspective, that tractor would be out in the field spreading the nutrients on the farmland and it's not freighting or tanking manure from the farm to the field. So that would be our preferred method of application.
100% injection?
100% injection.
We have 75 farms in nine states and it's 100% injection. In no time do we do anything surface application with a spray. What do you do for passengers? Inject it. We actually, we actually, it just slices, you can't even hardly see where they've been. And we've, we've showed people involved in this project that method.
One of the other concerns, of course, is air quality odor, whatever. What can you tell us about that when you're, when you're injecting? What can you tell us about that when you're injected?
We took people to a place where we'd inject them two days before.
I was on a field that was injected twenty-four hours before, and there was absolutely no odor when I walked across that field. I've been, I've been on one, two, three different farm sites. You get a hundred yards away, you can't smell them. And that's my biggest concern. I can't smell that good, but my wife can smell. She'll tell you the same. She'd be the first one to dig you in the ground if it smelled in her ass.
In the letter that we received where you penciled into us proposing this, they gave a site capacity of sixty-two hundred and ninety-two sows, fifteen hundred and sixty-eight nursery pigs, forty-eight boars, and nineteen hundred and twenty replacement fields. One C, if I read all the data that I've been studying on, is from one thousand to twenty-nine hundred and ninety-nine animal units. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
We'd be, our animal numbers are less than what the permit application is.
Well, that's why I was going to ask you, because when I calculated this out, I came out with thirty-three hundred and four animal units, so I obviously...
Well, the animals aren't all the same. The animal numbers are calculated different. So, full grown adult animals, two point five swine are one animal unit.
I used that.
Some of those animal units are fifteen pound pigs and some of them are forty pound pigs and things like that.
And what are they calculated at?
There's a scale that goes...
Like point two?
I can't answer that.
Point one, fifteen.
Fifteen.
For the small group. Point one animal units for pigs under fifty-five pounds, I believe.
What, one?
Point one animal units for the pigs, I believe.
So, these figures keep you under that twenty-nine hundred and ninety-nine threshold?
Yes.
Okay. Water supply, have you addressed that? What will be your source?
Our preference would be to drill a well.
So, we plan to drill a well, wells. But at this point, quite honestly, we're not going to spend any more money out there till we find out that you're on board. And so, I have met three times with the rural water district number four. We have also met their requirements. We've increased our water storage there to a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons if we have to take real water. We've also agreed to take it between midnight and five a.m. And so...
But your preference is wells?
Obviously, because it'd be a lot cheaper. Yeah. But we've met with them three times, and their requirements were that we take it between midnight and five a.m. And that we add to the water storage. We added the water storage to a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons.
And I know this is...
We also agreed to pay the retail price. So, we'll be paying the same price for water as what a house that uses two thousand gallons a month would pay.
Two other questions that relate to concerns about at Western State. Why Missouri?
I mean, what, I mean... I guess I could answer that question. I will attempt to, and Nick can add to it. The pig population is not very high in Missouri. And we're concerned that when the pig population becomes dense, it's no different than if the people population in Baltimore is as dense as it is, then we've got a problem. So, the pig population isn't very dense. And our goal of the Pipestone system is to help the farmer today, build the farmer tomorrow. And that is that he has to have a consistent source of high health pigs. So, we feel that by doing isolation here, having the pigs here, we can prevent any diseases and have minimal use of antibiotics and any kind of chemicals that are involved in pork production. So, the difference is that we're only going to raise the pig here to fourteen pounds. So, we're going to use about one point two bushels of corn per pig. When the pig goes further north, the corn's going to be a lot cheaper. But he's going to use ten bushels of corn there. So, that's why Missouri.
And one question that I know you can't answer, and I know we will be faced with is traffic. You mentioned six semis going in and out of there.
A week. Six semis for feed.
For feed, yes.
Two semis for fourteen pound pigs leaving, and one partially filled semi of coals leaving. And then, once every five weeks, a small truck or whatever bringing these replacement animals in. So, basically limited to about nine semis a week. The other, only other traffic would be the employees.
Thank you. I have one question. We're talking about the wells and everything. Have you talked with other individuals in this area that have wells?
And we've actually...
Water quality?
We've actually tested the water there. And we also have water consultant engineers that are involved in the project. And we've designed a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallon water storage so that, you know, you probably are aware of some of the common issues that there could be sulfates or whatever. So, it's likely that our water storage would be divided into two compartments. And we would have them power ventilated and aerated. We feel that, our consultants feel that that would resolve the problem. But we're, so, we're talking to rural water district number four. We're telling them that there may be a need that we may run into a bigger problem, and we may need to have, you know, all our water real. But that's certainly not our goal.
Well, that's why I was curious, because I know dealing with coal and issues in Bates County, sulfur water is one of the big issues because Rich Hill's had it for years. It's around Butler, we've had sulfur. And I'm just curious, if you hit that, are you going to be able to use it at all?
Well, that's our goal. Our consultants feel that we could probably power ventilate it and aerate it. In regards to Alan's question about supplemental benefits or income or whatever, we met with the rural water district and the possibility that they might buy additional water from the city of Rich Hill. And it was talked that, you know, they may have to add a water person or they may have to extend the work hours of the water person to have a greater payroll because obviously they're going to need more water and they're going to make money selling it to us.
That's all I had. Missouri Cattle Association.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Robert Grundich. I guess you guys can see me. I'm an environmental and agricultural attorney from Jefferson City. And I represent the Missouri Cattle Association, but I also represent the Pork Association. Both of those executive directors are here tonight. But I came with a few prepared remarks tonight, but listening to some of the comments tonight, I wanted to address some of the misinformation and fear mongering that's going on here tonight. I wrote down a few of these comments that really kind of get me going because, you know, I personally am an environmentalist. But you know who else is an environmentalist? All these farming and ranching and livestock folks here in this room, we're all environmentalists. We like to protect the environment. The DNR keeps us honest too. So, to hear some of these things is just really kind of disturbing. And here's one thing I heard tonight. That somehow now this area or Missouri is going to be the guinea pigs or CAPOs. Guess what? CAPOs have been here for a long time. They've been here since the eighties. We've got five hundred permitted CAPOs. There's been over four hundred and fifty permitted CAPOs in Missouri for a number of years. We don't get that many more CAPOs every year. They've been here a long time. So, where's all the pollution? Have you been reading about it in the newspapers? Because I sure haven't. I go all to the Clean Water Commission meetings, and I listen. Every year, they put together a list of all the impaired, polluted waterways in the state. It's called the 303D list. And guess what? Not a single one of those polluted streams and rivers is on there because of a concentrated male feeding operation. That's a fact. So, we get into the fear mongering, and I bet we're going to pollute everything. And no, we're not. One of the other things I heard is that, you know, now these CAPOs are going to run amok. Really? We've heard from the Department of Natural Resources, and they told us how closely they regulate these CAPOs. And I... Nobody's running amok. You don't see enforcement actions. Again, you don't read newspaper headlines. So, some of the other things I heard tonight over here about how there's been a rollback of all these regulations, and you need to step in and backfill them. The Department of Natural Resources for tonight, there's no rollback of regulations. In fact, Senate Bill 391 added some regulations to the concentrated male feeding operations. So, and then another thing, there's some kind of comment about, "Did you know a CAPO can produce enough waste of a city of sixteen thousand people?" or something like that. Well, how misleading is that? Guess what? CAPOs do not discharge. We recycle all those nutrients to put on the crop field or the pasture. We don't dump it in the stream. Every municipality, including this one here, discharges treated wastewater. Some of it's not treated the greatest. It goes into the stream every single day. But is that brought up? No. You talk about misinformation. You need to get the facts right. Another thing I heard, "Oh, we want you to pass this health ordinance tonight." Because, and trust me, it's not a ban on CAPOs. Well, no, it is a ban on CAPOs. This, these health ordinance, they're designed merely to zone these operations out of business so they can't come into the state. They're trying to prevent people like Pipestone from coming into the state of Missouri. That's all it is. Mr. Steen told you tonight, Lynn County, that's the one you're thinking about adopting tonight. Maybe with a few changes, not tonight, but you're thinking about it. Lynn County hasn't seen a new CAPO since this thing was adopted back in, I think, the late eighties. It's been on the books a long time. So, if you want to put up a sign at the county borders and say, "We are closed to livestock operations." And so, the next generation might as well just turn around and head out of the county. That's kind of what you're saying if you want to pass the health ordinance. You know, and another thing is that I heard tonight that, oh, if you pass a health, you know, a health ordinance, some of these other health ordinance counties, all twenty-two counties, there's CAPOs in those counties. Well, yeah, there's CAPOs because they grandfathered them in. But the other thing about this is that is a health ordinance really a health ordinance? You know, to say it's a health ordinance is a farce, to be honest with you. If you look at these people around here and ask this gentleman right here who told you, they've been around livestock all their life. If all these ranching and farming and livestock people thought it was a health problem, do you think they would raise their families right there on the farm with the livestock? No, they wouldn't. There wouldn't be anybody in business if it had to hurt your family. Because who do you want to protect the most? It would be my kids or your kids or anybody else's. These are not health ordinances. They're anti-livestock ordinances. They're zoning ordinances that shoots floating. Darn it, I wish I had another five minutes.
What was your second point that you, I had thought, but I lost it. Your second?
I got on a roll, so I'm not really sure. I talked about the impaired waters list. I talked about the no discharge systems. Rollbacks of CAPO regulations. Grandfathering clauses.
The beginning part, or the beginning.
The guinea pigs.
Yeah.
I said that Missouri has around five hundred permitted CAPOs in the state of Missouri. They've been around for a long time. I mean, I've worked on some of these farms. It may not look like it. This is the last time I'm wearing a tie to this meeting. I apologize. But...
Now, that wasn't there either. There's something else I thought. I was listening to what you were saying, or you didn't get it down? That's my question. You talked about how much discharge we had cities in comparison to the city that CAPOs do. Right after his, disturb, just disturb, the guinea pig remark. He said CAPOs run amok. Was that what it was? There's something else. Sorry, it's my fault. Maybe I just grabbed it. I have no questions.
And just so you know, if it wasn't clear, our organizations are strongly opposed to this county adopting the health ordinance.
I thought you were in favor.
Don't worry, the other two we're talking about were suits and ties tonight too. No, you can't. You might not have been aware of it.
And I don't know, maybe you did mention it, but it spurred something on my mind. Monitoring the watershed in this particular area, I pulled up some, I guess it was probably in our website page. We're monitoring the watershed. You have established sites, I guess scattered in where you're monitoring the watershed, but nothing out in that general area.
And I can't speak to exactly where we have monitoring stations at this present time. What I can say is that we do have an entire group with our program that that is what they do. They monitor the water quality in the state of Missouri. As a matter of fact, back in the, ten years ago, we used to have regulations that our largest CAPOs had to do in-stream monitoring to determine if there was any impact from the CAPOs. After extensive data, what they found was that there was no in-stream significant impacts from CAPOs. They actually stopped requiring in-stream monitoring because they found no value in the data that they were getting. What they were finding was the downstream monitoring in-stream didn't reflect anything differently than the upstream monitoring events. And so, because they had the data base that on, they stopped requiring that. We do have stream reviews on a regular basis. And when they find an impact, they declare, as you said, they go through, and it's not an insignificant event when they declare a stream impacted. And they declare those streams impacted for very specific pollutants. So, whether it's lead in the mining areas or whether it's E. coli in some other vicinity, they're not only going to declare it specifically for that pollutant. They definitely make every effort to figure out where those are coming from. And he's right, we haven't had any stream impacts that have been tied to CAPOs specifically. Agriculture has impacts, sure. Pesticide, herbicides, all kinds of things. But we haven't had any specifically connected to a CAPO discharge.
I'm proud to say who she's talking about is one of my clients, and I helped them attain that kind of record. And it's the largest CAPO outfit in the state of Missouri that they're monitoring around. And the DNR themselves said that they could not find that they had any impact on the waterways in that area on the monitoring.
What about getting into the water table, the water system itself, what's the likelihood of?
So, obviously, we also investigate any public drinking water well impacts. And we investigate any public drinking water well impacts that they find. Those are investigated, and they have to actually take additional steps. You have to remediate that. You have to clean it up. And we haven't had any public drinking water well impacts that have been connected directly to a CAPO.
I want to reiterate, those of you that were presenters, those of you sitting at the table, if we have other questions, we don't have to get ahold of you. We may recall you. We'll either get clarification on things that we have written down or we find in the recordings that, no. We can't agree on what that was. So, please do not feel like we're picking on you if we call you. We're trying to make the best decisions for this county all the way around. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Meeting itself as we had.